Thank you very much. Right, welcome everybody to this evening's four council meeting on Monday the 3rd of February. There's no planned fire drills this evening, so in the case that there is the fire alarm, please exit either in the door in which you came at the front of the building or five doors behind me. And next on the agenda, item two, we have apologies for absence. This evening we have apologies from councillor Edgar Taylor and councillors from the Monday field. That's second one, isn't it Sharon?
Yeah.
Next, we have item three, which is declarations of interest. Do any members have a declaration to declare? Councillor Dale?
Well, item eleven, it isn't mine lease, but there's two leases being discussed. So I don't know if you would like to leave me to...
You are welcome to stay. Councillor Fraser?
Six A.
Any other things? Next, we have item four, which is public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate at this point?
Yes. On the minutes of the last meeting, I wondered if it could be added in specifically about the request for sanitary levers that is to do with for use for people with prostate, cancer or caustomy bags rather than what? How about the box? I think that's quite irrelevant.
I thought the other thing. Yeah.
We have got that.
Yeah.
It is. Yeah, it's all, it's on there.
I've got some specifics.
We say the reason why.
Yeah. And the reason why?
Yeah, so just like an amendment, just to say for the purpose of and obviously give an example.
Because it seems a bit random, I don't know, as I thought.
Yeah. Anything to come to do to?
For the purpose of?
Yeah.
Can remember what the purpose was because I have to put exactly what was discussed. And we'd have to listen to the recording to add it in.
But that's what I said.
What did you say?
I said it was for use for people who suffer with prostate cancer or use caustomy bags. I actually said that at the meeting.
I do, I recall it being said. Yeah. It's been on a BBC programme that morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get that added in.
Thank you.
But we can write it in here.
We'll take that out.
Or when we're going to get the next slide, we just can write it. We don't have to.
Let's lose anything else.
No, not this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Item six C, incomes and entry, repayment plan for mobile phone misuse. Can you let us know what's the total amount due to be paid back? How is a misuse allowed to occur? And what safeguards has a council put in place to ensure that it doesn't go wrong again?
Is that on the income, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they know what it is, yeah. I think that that was covered in the public domain when it happened. And the amount is like four instalments of £25 per week until the shortfall is paid, which was agreed.
So what's the total amount?
Offhand, I can't remember. I have to get back to you.
Yeah, good. That's great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, one other one. It's been about two years since the town council voted to provide £50,000 funding to support the redevelopment of the sports hall. Since then, I know there's been some mention of other bits of money going, other council funding, some S106. In total, how much has ATC spent or committed to this project, including the 3G pitch? And when are we likely to see something?
The first amount was £50,000. The second amount was £56,000. And the amount of section 106 contributions came to, that were taken from section 106, various sort of developments. I think, I will get back to you with the exact figure, but it's in the region of about £300,000 all in, including the £106,000.
Which is about £300,000 in total?
Yeah, yeah.
And has anything happened yet?
Yeah, I mean, they're still working on it. I think they're still working on trying to get the planning application submitted. So they're working with the football foundation on the finer details in order to then get the planning.
That's lots of money.
They are working behind the scenes.
But I'm not saying anything anyway.
Yeah, no, no, they probably won't announce anything until they are obviously happy with getting everything right ahead of the planning application being submitted.
Councillor S Taylor, wasn't that actually on Breckland's planning committee last month? I don't think so. I'm sure there's some planning, the 3G pitch. No, that wasn't, that wasn't. There was another 3G pitch recently planned, but it wasn't that one. Anyone else? No. I will just say, in future, for future reference, if members of the public would like to participate and want specifics in terms of sums of money and things that require a little bit more detail, that aren't items on the agenda. So wouldn't necessarily be with us this evening, a heads up in advance of the meeting would be appreciated just so that that information can be sought and then an accurate factual response given. Moving on, we have item five, which is the minutes of the town council meeting on the 6th of January 2025. We have had a suggested amendment from the public gallery this evening and I'm quite happy to take. Is there any further amendments? Is that proposal with the amendment? And that's councillor Bertram, seconded by councillor De Souza. A show of hands please. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Next on the agenda, we have item six, financial matters. Six A, to authorise payments for acceptance and approval. Go and go far. Any comments, any queries? If not, can I have a proposal seconded please? That's councillor Bertram, seconded by councillor Jamie Taylor. A show of hands please. And that's unanimous. Councillor Fraser? Thank you. Next, we have item six B, to agree direct debit for acceptance and approval. Again, can I have any queries or if not, proposal seconded? Councillor Dale, seconded by councillor Reynolds. A show of hands please. Going with unanimous. Thank you very much. And to receive income for acceptance and approval. Can I have a proposal seconded please? Councillor Bertram, seconded by councillor Wenham. A show of hands. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Pay cash is for information. Do we have any queries? No. Do we have any queries on item six E, income expenditure for December 24? No. Six F is cash and investments reconciliation as of the 31st of December 2024. Again, this is for information. Any comments? No. Item six G is to ratify the purchase of kitchens for the Fono building and youth provision for acceptance and approval. Can I please have a proposal, councillor Deeira Dale, seconded by councillor Stephen Fraser. A show of hands please. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next, someone with a voucher right there because you know it says for information. Sorry, F. We do need actually voting. That just a vote to accept. Okay. Members, trying to just advise that they would like a, a vote on the cash and investments reconciliation. So can I have a proposal please to accept by councillor S Taylor, seconded by councillor Dalton. A show of hands. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we'll move forward to six H, which is to ratify the commissioning of the youth provision disabled toilet for acceptance and approval. By councillor Dalton, seconded by councillor Fraser. A show of hands. That's unanimous as well. Thank you. And then lastly, on financial matters, we have six I, which is to ratify a payment of £10,000 from the tarmac earmarked reserves to the Fono building repair reserve. And that's for acceptance and approval. Can I have a proposal please? Councillor Dale, seconded by councillor S Taylor. A show of hands. That's unanimous. Brilliant. Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda, we have item seven, which is Breckland car park and strategy update, consideration and resolution. Do you think fine? Yes. Sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. Breathe and feel it. Who's given the presentation on this?
It's just, it's just really to put that under councillor's noses because it was to do with the consultation that came out. And during the consultation, there were two other market towns that actually had objected to the car park charges, whereas Atleboro Town Council didn't. But they nonetheless wanted to, the two towns that objected actually asked if they could take charge of the car park. So could they run it? So that will obviously be given consideration. But they also, at the same time, wanted to give the opportunity to every other town council, the opportunity to say if they would like to take on the car park so that they look at it as whole. So that's just what that item is about.
So really, it's, would Atleboro Town Council like to negotiate ownership of the three car parks that Breckland Council are owning in the town? Are we happy for them to carry on as is and own them and introduce the car parking charges?
I don't think it's for ownership, is it? It's just for us to manage, manage it.
No.
So it's for us to manage, manage, manage.
So any amendments in the future would be our responsibility rather than the district's responsibility. Yes.
We did that earlier.
Yeah, we'll all pass on that, shall we?
I was just going to say, we need to, we need to look at the costs of it in detail.
Do you think there's a breakdown? I don't think there is.
No, it was just, it was just.
I think there was an expression of interest, wasn't it?
Expression of interest.
Well, I'm passing it.
Yeah.
I suppose we leave it to Breckland.
I think that's a successful suggestion. So we've got a proposal from councillor Dale. Do we have a second please? That's councillor Jay Taylor and a show of hands. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item A is correspondence, consideration and resolution. We've got eight A, which is Atleboro Town Hall filming location. These are all in the meeting packs, so presuming everyone's had a read in advance of the meeting. Any comments, any thoughts on this?
No, there's nothing in the pie code. It's just that should something come up, would you object to the particular filming company filming here? Anything that gives publicity to Atleboro is great, so I wouldn't object. I think we ought to encourage it.
Yeah, I'm with him. I'm saying lots of nods. So that's a proposal from councillor Dale. Can I have a second please? Councillor Bertram, a show of hands. Thank you very much. Next, we have eight B, which is Lally Gray, request to bring the fun fest to the recreation round the 9th to the 16th of June 2025. Any objections? Everyone happy? Yeah, is that a proposal, councillor Fraser? Can you hand it go up? Seconded by councillor Dalton and a show of hands. That's approved. Thank you very much. Next, we have item eight C, which is resident request to purchase or lease two car parking spaces at the rear of the town hall car park. Does anyone have any comments, any thoughts on this? Councillor S Taylor?
If we do for one resident, we've got to offer it to all of them.
Yeah.
It sets a precedent. And that's what, like, we have 20 odd houses that use the driveway. If we agree this with one resident, we have to offer it to the other 24 just to be seen to be transparent and operating equally.
Could you say purchase?
Well, they've offered to purchase all of them, so I agree.
Again, we have to offer it to all of them if we offer it to one.
Any other thoughts? Councillor Smith?
It says about having a conversation. Can we just have a conversation first before that?
Sharon?
Yeah, I mean, do you want to delegate some of the questions to the rest?
Councillor Smith?
Also suggested, well, that arrangement has already been put in place for the other rest. I don't know whether, yeah, I don't know whether that's true or not.
I mean, I do have a thought on this myself. My thought process is very similar. Not necessarily that we would have to offer, but if one requests and then another request follows and another request follows, where do you then draw the line? Because if we do say yes and we do set a question, that, that yes, we would engage in that. And there's only a limited amount of car parking spaces there. And with the amount of residents there are that labour, then actually we could be left in a position where we don't have enough car parking spaces, not only for our own staff that are here daily, but also for hivers and people that are using the town hall. And the particular resident that it is already has, am I correct in saying, hall car parking spaces available to them? And I think that if we're minded to say no, which there was a few nods while councillor S Taylor was talking, is it then just a waste, a waste of our officer time engaging in something that we're actually not minded to do? I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts. Councillor Dalton?
On the basis that when we had the discussion previously, most of them have some of the garages and parking space in front of garages. I say that.
Is that a proposal?
I'll propose that. I'll show you that.
I've got a second from councillor Westby and then a show of hands please. Any against, any exceptions? That's unanimous. Next, we have item eight D, which is a request from Russell's International Service to use the recreation round from 21st to the 27th of April 2025. Any comments and thoughts, councillor's ways?
Crack on with it.
That's, yeah, I'm going to accept. One of that football that might be on because of the season, I might be open. And that's going to go into Saturday, so.
Couldn't we not put with the upper end of the right? Depends on how much space they're on.
Could we sort the eyes of Patrick while I make a break? Well, one, it's a problem. Two, it's a problem of a way for alternative arrangements. That's for the benefit of the whole community.
Yeah, and also I do think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick did say in previous meetings that if we have something on the recreation round, so long as we let them know in enough time, they can make arrangements with their fixtures to play away on those days. So either we could go back to the football club and ask that. If not, space, like there's already gamers would be.
But they also maybe have youth football as well. But we have got the athletic track.
I, I'm minded to say approve it and ask the football club to amend their fixtures if possible.
Can we add into that and look at the viability of using the other end of the rep?
Yeah.
Because there's no reason why, they don't use both pitches every week.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, yeah. Can I, please make that proposal happen to me? I'll make that proposal seconded please. Councillor Ashley and a show of hands. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we have item eight E. Eight, two better roadshow events, Saturday, the 10th of May, 2025, request. Any thoughts?
That they're going to be bringing, they might bring buses onto the field, et cetera, just so you know, transport. So as long as you're okay with that. Just to check the age of the football, I don't know if they have training or any of their tournaments.
Yeah.
Just check with them.
It doesn't coincide with the tournament, does it? The tournament is in.
That game, just take it.
The tournament's tomorrow, is it right?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Talk tournament is. Oh, February and then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we've got that day yet.
The only thing I would say is if, if it does clash with youth football, you can get vehicle access onto the second field because obviously that's where our groundsman and other stuff is. Access there, so they could still use the bottom field. How the fun fest team do for the dog show and actually can get a really good setup on there.
Good.
Excellent. So I don't know, did we have a proposal? We didn't, did we? Councillor Dale, seconded by councillor Bertram and a show of hands.
I just clarify, this is for gamers.
Gamers, yeah. Thank you. Next, we have eight F, to note a two-day event on gamers for Atleboro Town Football Club in February half term. And this is their, this is the school, isn't it?
I mean, I just watched you denote it really because obviously, no, it's a bigger event.
Have they asked?
Um, no, but I put it on there because I noticed it, so, yeah. Or it's like some sort of formal request before we go making a proposal on something we've not been asked for.
Okay.
But it's, it's happening soon, isn't it? That's the thing, it will miss the next meeting, so. All right. Hopefully, if you've got an open space meeting coming up.
After that, yeah. That's on the 20th.
Can we, can we do it by email and?
Yeah.
And ratify. I think maybe it would just be nice to just get the, sorry.
Everyone else has lost permission. There is no exceptions.
All right, yeah.
Next, we have item eight G, eight to Z, Norfolk County Council, 10th of May.
I've got some feeling that is actually the same thing.
That's the same thing. That's a duplication. Okay, that's a duplication.
Yeah.
And then we have item eight H, which is a request from Atleboro Town Council Committee to use the recreation ground from the 8th to the 14th of July 2025. Do we?
I have no objection to that, but I do have concerns that the field will be fenced off from the park for such a long time.
How long do they, did?
I did look into it. It's the same as last year. They did do the same last year. Most, a lot of that is preparation because it's only a two-day one, but before and after, they will have setting up times, so. I think we've got an email. We didn't have a con for last year. We had quite in the park. But the fireworks is quite a massive event and they don't shut it off for six days. I don't quite understand. They don't shut it off. They don't, they don't shut it off. They might be there, but they don't actually. Shut it off. Shut it off. No, you can get around. It's only actually a council day that they. That you can have access, but they can't, they've put their equipment and given a break there.
Okay, that's right.
It was the same as last year, then.
So long, so, 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 yeah, I got my concerns, but if there's access, then I bet there's any cause for concern. So can I have a proposal seconded please to approve the request? Councillor Dale, seconded by councillor Reynolds. A show of hands please. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And then we have item nine, councillors' reports.
Oh, can I just say, I did have an email in today when we're talking about events, not on the agenda, but the British Legion have now given me their timetable for the whole year, which is really useful. So I will forward that to you. But they did just mention two events. One is on the 5th of May. They're planning to ask if they can use the Queen Square to do some sort of party event. And it's to do with, I think it's, it's a community tea, street party, but they would have some sort of a tribute to Winston Churchill. And then on the 8th of May is the BE Day 80, so. But the rest of it is the standard sort of Legion type events where they just have speech and squares.
I'm presuming that will come on to the next session anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
That's tough.
Trying to mention the 8th of May.
Yeah.
Because it also is a Thursday, so we'd have to work around it with the markets, right?
You had an idea in, which I had.
Yes, but we would still, we would still have the market that day though, wouldn't we? As it's supposed to.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Just that, sorry. Just.
Okay, noted. Thank you very much. Next, we have councillors' reports. Would any of the councillors like to report? Do you want to first? Yeah, I'll have to. I don't have too much to say. Obviously, we have our new community caf, which has been very strong. And we've had lots of funny generous sponsors come forward, local businesses and residents, clubs and organisations as well. And we've had obviously a lot of support from within the council, from our officers and also our members. And for anyone that's watching at home or any members of the public that are here this evening that might not know about it, the community caf is open every Sunday in the town hall from 12 till 2, where you can have a free meal and limited hot drinks and dessert. And so it's spread the word. And in addition to that, um.
So we're still ready to combat social isolation.
Yes, yes. So the, the idea, while it is open to absolutely everyone, is that hopefully it would combat social isolation, loneliness and obviously any financial hardship that we have in our community. We did have our farmers' market this Saturday. It was very good, very well attended, well supported by the community. And one of the stalls, actually, I think two of the stalls, completely sold out. So great feedback from them. And I think that Folgate Produce, who was the meat stall, done a bit with BC Radio Norfolk on farmers' market and has also done a bit with the DisExpress. So it's, it's very good that, you know, as much as we've promoted the market, actually we're trading service while actively trying to engage and spread the word.
Two of the markets, two of the market storeholders also expressed an interest in coming to the first market as well.
They have.
One of which comes all the way from Palt.
Yes.
So that was a remote, yeah.
And then civic duties, I had the pleasure this month of, well, actually, last month, of opening a new restaurant in the town. Councillor Bertram's recently opened the Bear. And I went and done a ribbon cutting last weekend. So thank you very much for having me. That was a pleasure. And I think that is about it for me. Anyone else? Councillor Taylor?
So was councillor. Two of them has covered most of town stuff, I'll just say. But we have attended all member training at district level this last month, this last meeting. And just some lessons and stuff, overview and scrutiny. And we have a report on Breckland's budget. It was quite informative. If anybody would like to watch that meeting, it was live streamed, so it can be found on YouTube. And it'll cover all of your proposed increases in any council tax. So your answers might be there if you want to find them. Councillor Taylor mentioned the community caf, which is very amazing. And then I'd like to take another opportunity to thank all the businesses that actually have come forward, come forward to support that. I think we are extremely lucky in our borough that we have a community that always seems to step up to the mark. And that without even asking for sponsorship, it's actually flooded in. And I think, and I'm sure she'll correct me if I'm wrong, we're now fully sponsored all the way up to July, which is an amazing achievement. And I'd also like to thank Anne for taking on the role of bookkeeper and managing everything that's coming. And hopefully in a few weeks' time, we'll be looking at maybe stuff that we can do a little bit extra. And that also at district level, we have been talking with owners to start an extra provision on a Thursday, which would, and we have, we've been sort this out for the last sort of month, where we can offer some signposting and support on a Thursday from the council chambers along with a hot meal and a hot drink. Space to come if you're lonely and looking for any help from one of the offices that will have advertised each week. And I think we're hoping to start at the end of this month. So that's something else that hopefully will be in place. And I'd like to thank the town council for running with your district members and picking up the gauntlet and working with us. It's an amazing thing that we're managing to achieve.
And one last thing that I hadn't mentioned, and it's not necessarily council related, but I think it's worthy of mentioning in these chambers, was actually the fact that one of our Atleboro businesses had received national recognition this week. And Tracy Turner won the Great British Businesswoman of the year 2025. And I honestly feel that for us as a community, for a town, it's nicer to have that kind of recognition and to have Atleboro on the map so positively. So I do think, Sharon, you went over and congratulated Tracy personally, didn't you?
I didn't actually get to see her, but I passed on a congratulation.
So, so, yeah, I think we have expressed our pleasure. And that actually, you know, I think honestly it's a, yeah, huge achievement. So does anyone else have anything that they'd like to say? Then we will move, oh, councillor's ways.
Just going to say, this weekend was the first time I have a chance to attend the community cafe. And I would bow over. Fantastic atmosphere. Everyone pulled together and I have to say, congratulations for putting it all together, everybody. It was, it was a great result. Really, it's something we should be proud of.
And to be honest, I do think most councillors have come and attended at least one session now. And the busiest session we've had so far was have 60 people in attendance in those two hours. So yes, definitely making a difference ultimately.
Great intended.
Thank you. Sharon, I'll hand over to you for item 10 o'clock's report.
Okay. I won't say too much about the community cafe because that's no mention. Just to say, I think you might have even mentioned they have individual sponsorship from businesses and individuals up to the end of July, which is. The public toilets, you'll be pleased to know, they will be hopefully, fingers crossed, the new doors will be put on on the 5th of February, which is this Thursday. And also the two parties that damaged both doors have been dealt with via restorative justice orders. So those have now been completed. The youth provision, youth premises now has a new name, which is the Arch Atleboro Recreation and Community Hub. Orders are being placed to get signage up very soon. The lease has been completed tonight. The lease has been completed tonight and the conversion, um, work, uh, is now underway to convert the toilet area and the kitchen, uh, to make them D D A compliant. There will also be a brand new kitchen installed, uh, and I am hoping to get a grant of two thousand pounds towards the cost of the conversion of the disabled toilet. Um, Hopkins Flooring have very kindly pledged to put a new flooring for free. And since that time, we've also had a pledge from Electric Leaver, who are, are lending the electrics, quite substantially, as it turns out. Because when they went to look at it today, it was actually worse than they thought. So it was absolutely nice of them to honour that because they still said it was still sound. Um, and we have had a meeting with, um, the interested youth, uh, some of the interested youth representatives. Um, so we are now starting to plan the timetable for the new provision. And if all goes well, we are hoping to sort of like, um, get the classes going through, uh, round about, uh, early March. I'm not going to give a specific date because something always goes wrong, but fingers crossed it would be then. Um, the bar in the town hall, we are pleased to report that three new bar staff have been appointed. Uh, but we, if anybody does still want to apply, they can still submit their CVs if they wish. Um, neighbourhood plan review, um, there is work underway continuing, uh, towards a public consultation, which will begin at the end of this month. Um, and also, um, we are working on the design code, um, which is basically to work out what type of characteristics for any building, buildings, houses, um, employment land that we, we would like to see, um, in the town. Um, town hall improvements, um, you might have noticed we've got some construction vehicles at the, uh, rear of the car park today. And also, um, the, the lane is now, has now begun. So the end of the lane will be, um, blocked off for the duration to vehicles. But, um, the contractors obviously have to let residents on foot, uh, be escorted to their properties. But it is effectively a building site now, so, um, we would appreciate it if people would cooperate with contractors. Um, the, the property owners have been communicated with, um, by way of letters and notices and also notices on Facebook. Um, the works to the front door automation, we're hoping that they will begin on Thursday and Friday. And the internal decorating for the downstairs of the town hall will also start on the tenth of February. Um, we haven't got a date for the kitchen refurbishment, but we're hoping, if that's in the town hall, we're hoping that will be done pretty soon. Um, and then after that, we obviously will get the flooring at the end. Town council maintenance, the planting of spring bulbs is going to be underway very soon. Um, in partnership with bloomers, so hopefully, um, we'll get those in as soon as possible and start to see them come up. Um, winter work for the open spaces is nearing completion. Um, the ground team have been working quite diligently at Decoy Common. And today I did have, that's not on the report, but I did actually have the, um, survey that was done by Norfolk Wildlife Trust. So that was quite an extensive amount of information that they have put in there and recommendations. So I will pass that on to the grounds, the head grounds, so that, uh, we can bear in mind what work needs to be done there. Um, the Bono building, the roof has undergone some repairs, uh, but there is a possibility that those, uh, some of the tiles, the, they fear that some of the, um, uh, nails are pretty worn. So, uh, that, I have gone back to ask how long that repair will last. But, um, that isn't ideal because we were hoping to get away with a repair, but it could be that, um, we might have to have some more work done at the moment. But I haven't, um, got the budget for that for the moment, so we'll, I will have to work on that. Um, survey work has also been undertaken just on the asbestos aspect of the two outbuildings, which are next to the scout hut. Um, and you're pleased to know that the new community orchard at Blackstone Road is, has been planted last week. And just to reassure everyone, it will be watered and cared for by the ground team.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Sharon? No, well, thank you very much. And as always, the report will be available on the town council website. Everyone will want to read it at their leisure. Uh, next we have item eleven, which is the leases update for consideration and resolution. Um, eleven A is the Scouts. Um, Sharon, is there something that you'd like to mention on this?
I did just send out the points from the, um, the Scouts, uh, solicitor. Um, there weren't quite a lot of them, so I didn't know whether you'd wanted to delegate. Maybe one or two councillors to work with me to go through the points at all. Um, but at least we did have a response from them.
Um, I was just going to say, have you had the asbestos report back?
Yes.
And, and they're all clear?
Um, I wouldn't, no, I think it's sort of like mixed, really, mixed points.
Because obviously one of those buildings is part of the Scouts lease. And obviously if there is anything within that, that we need to be cautious of, I'd rather us note, like, address that before he agreed his lease. Because I wouldn't want the lease to go through.
Exactly, yeah. I'll, I'll forward you a copy of it. Um, however, um, when I did liaise with the Scouts, they seemed to not know what was in that building. So I'm not even sure if things are even being used, even though it might be part of the, the old Scouts lease. I'm getting the R I.
Yeah, because obviously if they don't need it, then I'm sure we can utilise it for, yeah, something better. But if they do need it, I would like to know that it is asbestos free or any works to make sure that it is up to scratch is undertaken before we enter into any formal agreement. I just think that it's obviously a public health concern and we need to make sure that we've got all our Ts crossed and Is dotted.
Yeah.
Before we.
Yeah. Sharon, how many people will you want in to work on this week?
Maybe a couple, because having two is sort of like the best case scenario, I believe. Because, uh, you can only delegate to two councillors and that sort of thing.
I'm, I'm happy to, if no one else wants to, it does a little bit.
Depending on time, I don't mind.
So, so, well, we have three volunteers. Three, okay?
Well, if we have three and then I need the two.
Then there's always these two plus a lovely.
As I've got councillor Fries, councillor Dalton and councillor Taylor, S Taylor. Uh, is everyone content with that? Can I have a proposal and a second, then? Are you abstaining?
Yes, definitely.
A proposal and a second, please. I've got councillor Wondham and Michelle Pans. But, no, it's not. Um, carried by majority, one abstention.
Councillor Dalton.
Abstention, please. You have, thank you.
Thank you, yes. Um, and we have both of us.
Yeah, I mean, but you've had a hard work on that one. So I've, I've basically done an extension to the original lease, uh, so that it makes it a bit more simple. Because that really was quite a simplistic scenario.
That was, yeah.
Uh, we have upped the, uh, rental for the privilege of having the car park spaces marked out, which we already marked. So that, that, if you can agree that and I can present that to them and they agree, then that could be signed, yeah.
I suppose we do. Councillor Taylor's second, bye. Bless me, pardon me, councillor Fraser, and show of hands, please. That's carried with one abstention.
Abstention, please. Thank you. Can I have a, just a vote to the chairman, why did you have to sign it? When it's ready.
Yeah, hang on, I'll just think of it and come back. Let me see, yeah, I've got councillor Bertram, seconded by councillor Dalton, and a show of hands, please. Yeah, I should like, oh, like carried.
Majority, yeah.
Another, another, yeah. For chairman of both chairs.
Yep.
Lovely. Sneezes. Do apologise, everybody. Uh, item twelve, it says, events committee, um, I. Is that just for an update, a report?
Yeah, because we had a meeting today, didn't we?
I will say though, that just as a record, that we don't get any questions, it's.
Event working group, sorry.
We'll, we'll, we'll accept that. We know what you mean.
Yeah.
Um, councillor Bertram, would you like to give us some recap?
Oh, can we discuss what we're supposed to actually say?
Yeah, just, yeah, there's.
Just a brief recap that we are.
I did make notes of you.
Yeah, yeah, just a brief recap that we are getting together, um, to try, or we are, um, rolling out Atterborough SME Awards, business awards. Um, and we're working closely with Jazz from Sherborne House. Um, we're looking at, correct me, we're looking at a launch night in November. Are we, Sharon? Yeah, a launch night in November for the SME awards. In the meantime, there's going to be some of us working behind the scenes to get, um, some publication out online and some leaflets out to local businesses.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so, yeah, the flyers, um, which hopefully you're going to work on. Um, and then we've got to provide the town council business database to be worked on so that we can communicate with all businesses. Um, and then, uh, yeah, mid-October, possibly up to mid-November could be the day of the actual awards. Um, but he is working on doing a launch, um, I think in, uh, he didn't really say a date on that, but that would be at Sherborne Hotel.
That will be, I could choose a wine evening at the Sherborne Hotel and network into businesses.
But, um, but obviously, uh, we're, we're looking for anyone who's on the, um, the working group, uh, to, um, meet, uh, after, we've had a sort of a brief meeting with Jazz on the fifth of February. Um, he, he sort of said, uh, can we get the small working group, uh, the work, a small working group together of the week commencing seventeenth of Feb. But when he, when he doesn't want the whole working group there, because he said it's very hard to make decisions because everyone has a different viewpoint. So if you could, uh, when, when we, um, do that, we just need a couple of key cancers to agree.
Could I suggest that perhaps, uh, if anyone wants to make their own suggestion, they're welcome to. That is, if they're happy to do it, councillor Bertram is chair of the working group and councillor Dalton is vice chair of the working group.
Yeah.
Uh, along with yourself, Sharon?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. And would you like that as a proposal for the delegation, if you like?
Yeah.
I'm having to make that proposal, seconded by councillor Jay Taylor and Michelle Pans. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
See, it sounds like an opportunity for Atterborough because Jazz has also successfully done Peterborough Business Awards and Thetford Business Awards. Something that Atterborough hasn't had. It's quite exciting for us as well as a community and local businesses.
And I, I think as well, not only does it, um, give a platform for the businesses to come together and to network, but actually formating, you know, a database of the businesses and everything else would help the town council, especially in regards to like our business directory and signposting and everything else. So I feel like there is other hidden benefits as well as obviously the obvious benefits.
Yes. And he did make, he wanted to emphasise that it's really for small and medium businesses.
SME, yeah.
Um, and also the awards is not meant to be like grand fair, which is going to be costly. We want to keep the cost down so that it attracts.
More SME rather than your corporate companies like the Atterborough based SMEs.
And independents, exactly.
Love this. Thank you very much.
Also, we've got a, um, a word doc with event dates. Is that necessary to talk about? Or is that just for?
Please do, because that's what I was then actually going to ask about. I was going to say, I may put the cinema, I can have you. So I was going to ask you if we could have something that's available that we could actually do to.
Yeah, we're, or we're in the process of doing a diary, aren't we? And, and dive the whole year.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I haven't put, because I, I just put those down because those were on the agenda. You won't pass those around, but, um, um. With the, uh, uh, those are just the requests of the night and then I can actually forward to you. So I think it's the twenty third and twenty fourth of August is the, um, Open Air Cinema.
And of course, obviously, there's also the town.
And the Pride event.
Yeah, I was just meaning more, can we have something on our website as an open event calendar?
Yeah, that's right.
That we can feed into.
Sharon, you're in the, are you in the, you're in the process of doing that, aren't you?
Yeah, I, I've done it in date order.
Yeah, yeah.
But that what you've got is in now and date order and then I can add our existing.
Yes, and then everybody knows what's.
Not wanting to create any additional work for anyone. Um, but Breckland Council on their website also have a function where you can submit, um, events. So so long as there's obviously enough loaders, if you make the submission, they'll then upload that onto their website so that it's, um, actually advertised across the district and in their magazines as well.
And whilst you don't want to make any more work down the middle, Sharon, no, I really do. Because in this list of events, can we add our farmers' market? Because I also know that there's quite a lot of work going on behind the scenes to add in a makers' market as well. So I just think the more we can promote what there is to attract people to come into the town, to support our residents, to support our.
And also, sorry, talking of the farmers' market, councillor Bertram. And one of the farmers' markets does coincide with the Pride event. So I did have a conversation with you how we could.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yes, we've, we've put an application to close the car park.
Yeah.
So we can, the market, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, perfect.
So I, I just didn't want to be too presumptuous.
Yes, perfect. And also, it's not on here, I have been approached by, uh, Member of the Public about Norfolk Day. So that's something that we are actively looking at as well for Norfolk Day.
Good job.
That's not on here, but we are doing it.
Thank you very much.
No, no, no.
Very exciting update, thank you. Um, so anyone have any comments or questions? Can we move on? Nope. Okay, uh, well, then we'll go to item thirteen, which is to confirm the next book sale dates for consideration and resolution. Uh, I did have a brief look at the diary with Sharon in advance of the meeting so that we could come forward with, uh, a suggestion. So it wasn't just pulling a date out of her hat. Um, the town hall, as always, is very busy, uh, which is good, lots of bookings. Um, and the most open weekend that would be most, therefore maybe easy to accommodate, um, would be, um, a set up on Thursday, the sixth of March. Uh, book sale, the Friday, the seventh and Saturday, the eighth. And then I was actually going to ask if, given the fact that we now have the chamber's caf on the Sunday, that we just have to book sales as a two-day event. Um, does anyone have any comments or councillor Taylor?
I'm kind of happy for that, but I'm also happy that maybe we can just leave some, some of the books, like the most popular books, in, in the front room, because you never know, people coming in to the, at the Community Caf may well still.
Have a smaller setup.
Yeah, so still have a three-day event, but on the Sunday, just scale it back a little.
Okay. Uh, any further comments?
How realistic is that in terms of organising itself? If you've got a room full in here.
Well, they, the.
The only thing you could do is maybe have like a non-mystic box or something out on the last day.
It's not so much status space, is it? How much organising would have been empty in this and put it in there?
Well, no, would you just leave the setup in there? Don't move the setup that's in there, so we'll empty this one. Which you'd want us to empty anyway. If we'd done it on a Saturday, just Friday and Saturday, it would still be being emptied anyway for the Sunday.
We still have, have said someone to store that.
Yeah.
Because normally brown steam come pick up on the, but I'll pay on the Sunday evening or Saturday evening. Uh, because we're down Saturday.
Can the caretaker not drive the truck and we can load it up? We could ask them. One of them does work on a Sa- Saturday.
Probably a driver as well. They're not called visual.
Yeah, we twice. Uh, I think it's, uh.
Well, to be honest, um, Sharon, just from what councillor Fraser just said, um, we, for a long time now, I think for at least a year, if not longer, had been discussing automatic storage arrangements for the books because they don't store particularly well, um, in the chapel because it's cold and damp. Um, there was a few books that were damaged and had to be discarded of, that went waste. And also it is a lot of logging backwards and forwards. If we could have a small container or something that's here so that it's just movement in, movement out would be a lot easier and would, would save half a day before and after gun staff's time, logging them backwards and forwards.
Which councillor, it's a sort of an upper limit, I'm not going to stand.
Well, I, I.
I think just appreciate that councillor Taylor, but obviously the aim of the book sale is to generate money. That would, I don't think it would cover the costs of the container. But we have the nissen hut. Also, there's an empty building that we can store stuff in.
Yes. True.
So if that's dry, and I know it's still moving them, but you can always, I'm quite happy to volunteer our work. And but that is, uh, yeah, that's similar to the arrangement we've got at the chapel. Although the nissen hut might be a little bit better for, uh, storage and keeping it in good condition. But it's still then, if you have it out the back there, that's less.
Oh, it's much easier, but I'm just thinking of the cost for what the book sale makes. How much would we be spending on a container?
If I, I'll come to you next council vote, if I may. I think storage is a separate issue that we should bring back to a, a further agenda. That's not particularly what we're here to talk about tonight. It's the dates for the book sale. Um, so just bringing it back to the agenda, I, um, would members be content with the sixth, seventh and eighth? Councillor Fries?
I'm, I'm going back to what Sam was talking about, fortunately, stories type issue. If we did get something, it wouldn't, at the end of the day, could it be used for other things as well as books, is what I'm thinking, back in my mind. So we can not, so that he. cast on the book sale, but.
Yeah.
With Paul.
Thank you, Andy.
I'm happy with the dates, but I'm not available that weekend. My son's birthday.
Those were first the dates?
I'd say the evening is doing that after, there's chances of getting it all run open on a Sunday for community cab or anything else, so that's, we'll talk about coming back here as soon as possible, if ever seen to do that.
On the Saturday night.
Yeah.
Do we have any alternative dates to those two?
Not really, not in that month.
It's always going to be the same one, no?
It's just that the week after, on the Thursday, we've got a booking for three hours, bank smack from midday to 3.30.
So you could sort that by evening?
Yeah, I suppose so, yeah.
If not.
Anne pointed out, we usually do it on Easter holiday, which is April. That would be setting up on Thursday, the 17th of April, and running Friday, the 18th, Saturday, the 19th, for Easter weekend, or if it was just to cover the two-week half term, it could be the week before. But unfortunately, we have a booking hall on the Friday, so it would have to be Easter weekend.
Is it free?
Easter weekend, yeah.
Why don't we do it then?
So what date is that? That would be.
But we still have the same problem, something. You have the same problem.
Yeah.
But just at Easter, a lot of people may not be there here or on holiday or wait the weekend or.
So that's the weekend we normally do it.
Where music bands also.
I'd place Paul Everdoin at Easter weekend, like the weekend of Easter.
We've never been open until Sunday, have we?
Yeah.
It is huge.
Yeah, it was April.
It's hugely taken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's huge. So it would be before, which is school holidays, but we'd like to do it that week because we've got a booking in the hall on the Friday. Councillor Dalton?
There's two bank holidays in May, does it not fit with any of the May dates?
We've got nothing going on in the vicinity from May, eh? It's quite late, isn't it?
Yeah.
It doesn't necessarily have to be the bank holiday, does it?
I'm just going to break them down and say that.
I think. I don't agree. I could feel that this would be so difficult. I feel like we're taking up far too much time this evening, though.
I suppose we just delegate that the date is set, chose and emailed round, and we can all respond by ourselves, councillor Bertram and Sharon, come up with anything that is an event.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Anyone second, like? Councillor Fraser, and Michelle Pounds, that is carried. Okay, I'm had that in charge. That was like putting teeth. Next, we have the second public participation, would anyone like to participate? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have item fifteen, agenda items for the next meeting, can we leave that to be confirmed?
I've got RBL events and a storage container.
Thank you. Now we have item sixteen, which is the exclusion of the present public, to pass a resolution excluding the present public, and given sets of criteria, business to be discussed, posed by councillor Bertram, and by councillor Fraser and Michelle Pounds, carried. Thank you for coming, everyone.